Welcome, everyone. I believe that we are now recording. Welcome to our school, Rutland Town School Board meeting. It's a little after six. If we could all rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is staff and student highlights, and I believe we have our, one of our reading[54.12][54.12]interventionists, Sue Quinell here.
Yeah, sure. It's different on this side than the other side. The last year when I came, there were no people here, but. I'm Sue Quinell. I'm the reading interventionist, or one of the reading interventionists at Rutland Town School. And this year, I just thought I'd pop in and spend a couple of minutes talking about what we've been doing with writing at Rutland Town School. On your table, and some of you guys got one, on, it's just a little, it's called a quick write. And what you're gonna do is just flip it over, and I'm gonna give you exactly 45 seconds to fill in anything that comes to mind as you look at those prompts. So 45 seconds, jot. What you guys just experienced is something called a quick write, which we at Rutland Town School have been using in order to incorporate writing into our daily lives, a lot more than we have. The prompts that the folks at home didn't maybe see, it's all about writing. So writing blank, writing is, I can't think of the, writing requires, writing can be, and revision is blah. So you're just right next to me, you don't mind if I.
Oh, I know.
Okay. So, writing is an art. Writing requires learning, writing can be fun, and revision is necessary, which was kind of fun. Tim, I won't pick on you this year. I'll be over here on this side.
I started from the bottom up.
Oh, revision is.
Corrections.
Corrections and additions, indeed. Writing can be engaging. Oh, these are fabulous. Writing is dumb. Oh, interjecting Colin. Listen, that is something that happened a lot when we did this with students. Writing is fun, writing requires good sense, writing can be difficult. Here, do you want to share any of yours?
I just.
Writing is fun. Chris, did you fill yours in?
If you read it.
I was a first grade teacher, so I'm good. Writing is useful to the.
Useful way to communicate.
A useful way to communicate. Excellent job. Very fun. And it's just a very quick way to get kids thinking and writing, and sharing ideas and thoughts. And the first thing that we did for our writing journal was, we got together as a team and decided that writing was something that we needed to focus a little bit on at Rutland Town School. And so last spring, teachers in K to 2 and 3rd and 4th grade went to, they attended virtual PD with Keys to Learning, Keys to Literacy. And they did Keys to Early Writing with K to 2, and then 3rd and 4th grade did Keys to Content Writing. And from those two days, all kinds of wonderful conversations started to spring about our school. And teachers came to me, and they talked about the things that they were implementing, and how excited their kids were getting about writing, and how excited they were about writing. So from that, those four days, basically, we then had a consultation with Melissa Powers, who's one of the founders of Keys to Literacy. And she met with teachers in the summer, K to 2 teachers, and then in the fall, with 3rd and 4th grade teachers, and we developed writing beliefs. So things that we hold special and kind of give us a foundation for our writing instruction as we move along. And so with those beliefs, teachers developed anchor lessons and are having a great time using those beliefs with our students and developing all those fabulous ideas that writing happens every day, writing is purposeful. I think, I'm not sure if you guys got that slide with the.
The beliefs?
Yeah.
Yes.
Which I'm gonna talk about in just a second, but though, these are all the different beliefs that we came up with. So from that consultation time, then we actually had a coach come from Keys to Rutland Town School, and she spent time with teachers in K to 4. And we took a look at what was currently happening with our writing programs, and we took a look at maybe where we wanted to go. And we talked about, the teachers did the same exact activity that you just did, kids did this activity as well. And it was, I don't know, it was kind of like, all of a sudden, we opened up this wonderful conversation about writing. So Janice, from our conversations with Janice and spending the day with her, we decided that our next step focus was on syntax and also text structure, which is coming. In October, we got to spend some time during a PLC, talking and focusing more on developing these lessons. In early October, the 5th, 6th, and 7th and 8th grade ELA teachers jumped on board, and they also went to Keys to Content Writing. It's just kind of like this huge movement that's happening right now at school. In December, we're, for our early release day, we're gonna spend more time developing lessons around syntax, which is great, and then Janice will return in February for Day Two of coaching. So just really exciting, fun things going on. And I just have a quick article. How close am I to my time?
Okay. No, you're good, you're good.
All right. Writers at Rutland Town in kindergarten through 4th grade have recently adopted new writing beliefs to grow a community of confident writers. The five beliefs have started great conversations where writing is a valued skill that is an essential part of everyday life. The first belief, readers read and write every day, everywhere, with a purpose, sets the stage for even our youngest writers to recognize that writing and reading are everywhere. Luke W. in 1st grade shares, "I didn't realize that we read and write so many things in one day." And Addison S. in 4th grade says, "There's writing all around us." This belief encourage all student, encourages all students to see how important reading and writing are to our lives every day. The belief that everyone is a writer, writer matters, empowers students to see themselves as writers. It adds values to thoughts and ideas expressed by students. Dominica, a 3rd grade enthusiastically declares, "I am a writer." Writers collaborate to grow their writing is our third belief. Writers share ideas with peers for inspiration and feedback. Katie S. from 3rd grade said it beautifully, "Writers talk to grow their writing." Her classmate Finn knows you can get really good ideas from your readers. The next writing belief, writing is a process, encourages writers to plan, write, and revise. Emerson S. in 4th grade knows that writing has so many parts and that you can change your thoughts. Wesley M. says, "It's okay to make mistakes because writing is a process." The final belief, writing is a roller coaster, spark great conversation. Writing can be an emotional experience with highs and lows. Thank you, Colin, for putting out the notes. 3rd grader Spencer W. said it perfectly. You can be nervous and scared and excited about writing all at the same time. And Cameron H. in 4th grade adds, "Writing can be really crazy." We can't wait to see where our new writing beliefs take us as a writing community. We are positive that the writing beliefs will help create confident, creative, and skilled writers at Rutland Town School.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much, Sue. And one of the, what's on, that Sue printed for us are our writing beliefs that we have posted right in front of the nurse's office. And Sally Hogan, our art teacher, did some amazing drawings. If you can zoom in, I have posted on our Facebook page, but it is just, it's beautiful. And I think since we've spent a lot of time about the science of reading, we have our new math program that's just updated, it's the same math program, but a new updated version. And now this is the next steps into writing. So we're very thankful that Sue was able to get Keys to Literacy, and our first training was covered through Esser Funds. That was funded free for us, so that was great. And teachers have been amazing, as she said, attended through the summer voluntarily to start this work off in the fall. So it's great, thank you.
Next up is old business. First would be a PCB update.
So I think I gave you the last update. I don't have any more to update from the last time. So we just know that there will be another round of testing that happens, I believe, in December.
Yes.
In December. And that's all that, that we have. So we will alert Monsanto and attorneys and everybody, and the community when the testing happens, and then we wait for the results again.
Thank you. CLA update. I believe that Marcia, I haven't heard from the listers, but I believe she did update the Select Board last meeting, or the meeting before, about attending some trainings. And then it sounds like it will be a long time till we're able to get reappraised.
I think the year was 2029 before we were gonna be able to be reappraised, because there's such a shortage of.
Yeah, so unless something shifts some other way, which keeps our CLA pretty low, which affects the education side of the budget, even though it doesn't affect the education budget, it affects the property taxes from the education side. So, next up is a virtual newsletter and email list. I met with Greg Connors, who's our technology director at our supervisory union, and we explored looking into putting together a way for the board to let stakeholders, the community members, that aren't part of the school system right now, that they don't have children in the school, or they're not teachers or parents, to hear what's going on, to know when votes are, to know when, you know, there's been new information about the budget, that type of thing. So our idea was to try to reach as many people as we can, just to keep them informed, and to allow them to ask us questions and kind of just have some more dialogue. So it looks like it would cost us maybe about $10 a month to have access to Mailchimp, an account there. We could set up a QR code and allow people easy ways to get onto it, as well as emailing the main email list, our email address that's associated with the account, and that this account would just be from the board. It would not be from central office. It would just be a way for us to communicate more. So I was wondering if the board had any more questions. Greg is here, if there's any technological questions to ask him.
Mailchimp is a good choice. It has a drag-and-drop interface for creating flyers and information. It's pretty easy to use. The $10 a month version has a long enough, like, user list that you won't have to worry about. It's the length of distribution and the amount of people it's distributing to. One of our other boards, the Wells Springs Board, uses it as well to communicate with the community. And this way, you have autonomy, like, you know, you don't have to rely on any of our systems. You can create it whenever you want, and send it out whenever you want. We'll put it on the website, put buttons for the signup on Rutland Town's website, and, you know, we could tell the front office to proselytize it a little bit if you want to sign up to do this, you know, whatever. We will maintain the email account that it's based on, just, just in case, but, and we'll obviously be able to help out with any other technical problems, but it's, it's kind of like yours to control, yours to distribute. You can control the schedule and that, if the composition, what information, stuff like that, so gives you a little bit of autonomy and flexibility.
So Greg went ahead and kind of just started the setup process. It's not officially set up yet, but he did put a button on our web, webpage for the school.
Yes, it's taking in.
But I was curious, did it, did it catch anyone yet?
I have not had the opportunity to check the user account, but I could do that and give it to you tomorrow.
Okay. I have a feeling it may not have yet, because we didn't advertise, and also, I have spoken with Shannon, I had the opportunity to speak with her, and she's one that was placing it. She agreed that it doesn't stand out, so it's not easy to find on the webpage. So I think we're gonna, if we do go ahead with this idea, we'll find a better way to kind of attract people to see it when they go to the school website. But another thought I had was to put the QR code and the information about it in the Next Circle newsletter, so that everyone who looks at that newsletter will at least know that it's available, and if they recycle it too fast before they sign up, hopefully they'll know it exists and they could reach out and find out how to get on it. So, any other questions from the board before I'll take a motion?
Make a motion to get it going.
Good. Put in the budget for next year?
Yes.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Jeff. All right. There's no new business tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the warrants and the minutes.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Colin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tina. I have just a few items to go through. I know that I went through the report last night, and just we have a lot to cover tonight. So, one, I wanted to just thank Colin Fingen, Tina Keishva, and Jeff Cologne, who took time out of their busy schedule to attend the VSA/VSBA Fall Conference up in Lake Morrie. It was a great conference. I've been, this is my fifth year going to this. Excuse me, and this was the, I believe, the best year. Great workshops, particularly around board negotiations, budgeting, you know, as, I think that's on all of our minds right now, just how we can best handle the cost drivers, the influences, what we can do, you know, you know, within our own school districts to help, you know, balance budgets and be fiscally responsible, while also meet the needs of our students. So, a great week, and I just wanted to say thank you. I also want to, and I know Mike and Sarah probably talked about this a little bit more, so I'm not gonna steal their thunder, but on the evening of the 27th, which is that Thursday, they had what's called a celebration of public education, in which they invited schools and, you know, from around the state, and Rutland Town was invited to attend, and then the, you know, the Green Team, which, you know, Mr. Lamar and Ms. Moriarty, you know, are chair or kind of, you know, look over, and I, I have the names, and I just want to make sure that, so we have Lily Brown, Emma Coleman, Violet Polley, Sarah Minicello, Lucy Brettigan, and Lillian Brownfield, correct? Okay, and I hope I said all those names correctly. I practiced before I came, so, because I think it's important to make sure you say the names correctly. But they did a great job, and I know that, I heard a lot from a lot of the board chairs, this other superintendents, about how impressed they were with the work that Rutland Town was doing for the Green Team, as well as reaching out, it's about how they get more information to starting a similar program in their school. So I just want to publicly say thank you to Mike, and to Shannon, to these kids for, you know, all the great work in representing Rutland Town, and, you know, the junior CSU in such a positive light.
Thank you.
And one other item, I just, actually, two other items. I know that this will be an item for discussion on our cost driver presentation, but the Vermont Education Health Initiative did release on October 22nd, the, what their projected premium increase would be for this year, and that is 11.9%, which is down from 16.4%, which it's trending in the right direction, but still it's double digits. And so we'll talk, you know, lose myself, talk a little bit more about the impact that that has, but, you know, we were anticipating maybe being a little bit higher, so that was, I guess, a, you know, good news to a certain extent, like I said, it's still, say, double digits is still significant in the impact it has on our budget, so, you know, just to make everyone aware of that, we have received that number, that we can, you know, to start planning our budget around that. And I just have a quick negotiations update, just for the board community, that's with the, between the, with the support staff, we are currently at impasse. We are looking to go to mediation, so we are looking to schedule that time. And then we are currently looking to set a ground rules meeting with the teachers, so that should be started up hopefully in December sometime, so we will have more updates as we go through, so. But I know people do ask about that, and that is something which is a cost driver on personnel costs, around collective bargaining agreements, and we are in the process of negotiating with both our support staff and our teachers currently. And that's something which we do negotiate as an SEO, not individual districts, so, good.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Chris? I just wanted to also reiterate what Chris said about the Green Team. They were very impressive, they were lively, they were knowledgeable, they interacted so well with the community that was there. So, and it was very nice to have dinner with them, and, you know, chat, chat with them a little bit afterwards, so we were very proud. So thank you for leading that and bringing them that long distance for that evening.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having dinner with us.
They were so excited and so.
They seemed excited for the bus ride, and so.
Oh, yeah, because I got to sit in the back. To get to sit in the back.
Right, because they're younger kids.
Very excited, yeah.
This is fun.
Yeah.
All right, so next up is the principals' report, and I can share the FastBridge data.
You can. Do you want me, I know, do you want me to highlight some of this, since we're here?
Just a little bit, I just.
Okay, just a couple of things. So Lifetime Sports, and a couple of bullet points got moved around, I apologize, on the board copy for some reason. So Lifetime Sports, a survey was sent to families this year. This will be our second year participating in Lifetime Sports, kindergarten through 8th grades. The hope is that all kids will be off campus this year. So the options are skiing and snowboarding at Pyco, rock climbing at Green Mountain Rock Climbing Center, skating at George Eddy, bowling at Bullarama, gymnastics at Head Over Heels, and then tennis at Vermont Sport and Fitness. So the first task is to see where kids are, and then Mr. Schneider, thanks to Colin Fingen and Mr. Heskock, they start organizing how the logistics of this. So for six Thursday afternoons, our students will be able to choose one of these Lifetime Sports activities, which is great. Thanks to Ms. Manneville, she put on a wonderful high school fair on October 30th for our 8th graders. She also went to Wells Village School and made a great presentation. They have school choice starting in 7th grade, so she went to Wells Village School, as well as Middletown, where they had like a middle school fair, and showcased all the amazing things that are a part of the Rutland Town Middle School. Parent-teacher conferences are tomorrow. And Friday afternoon, Mr. Lamar, we'll talk a little bit about this when we review our continuous improvement plan, but him, Mrs. Yado, our behavior specialist, and Ms. Arnold are continuing to go into our middle school classrooms to talk about social-emotional learning, advocacy, and just making good decisions, being kind people during that TA time. And some of you that follow on Facebook may have seen Katie McDougall, our middle school science teacher, welcomed 2nd through 4th grade students to do some laser mazes. They worked together with some of the older middle school students, which was fun to see. We have 7th grade peer leaders, it was previously called our Student Council, and they are working with local DCF to start a lightly-used newborn-through-five-year-old toys, clothes, car seat, et cetera, drive. Ms. Manneville, also our guidance counselor, she leads 5th and 6th grade student ambassadors. It's kind of just before they get to Student Council, and they held their first monthly student assembly for students in grades K through 4. October's character trait was compassion, and November's character trait is citizenship. The student ambassadors are also heading up Stuff of Us through the Credit Union of Vermont, so some of you may have seen that we're very thankful for all the donations that Rutland Town families have brought in for Stuff of Us, and we were thankful that Carrie Clark allowed us to make a little poster sign for those that came to vote if they wanted to drop off a non-perishable food item. So thank you to everybody that's, that's done that. As many of you know, we have a significant increase in need in our population in the town, so we know that the, that food will directly go to our, to our families. We'll talk a little bit about our educational support team and interventions and needs when we talk about our continuous improvement plan. We do, also do a first round of Sabres, which is kind of that social-emotional check-in piece for all of our students, so that was completed. And then any teachers that have concerns over our students, they share those with our team of counselors, to make sure that we make a plan and touch base with them. And then we'll go over this stuff in a minute. We have some new trees planted out in front of the school, some filter exchanges for our HVAC system, we had our biannual asbestos check. We are, thanks to Tina, moving our compost with somebody that is a little bit cheaper, which is great. Our gym lights were all replaced with LED lighting a few weeks ago as well. And just a couple celebrations, our cross-country team, they completed in the Southern Valley Championship on October 18th. The boys placed first overall with 39 points, and three boys finishing in the top 10, and the girls had a strong performance with one finishing in the top 5. So a huge congrats to all those runners, as well as our coach, Amanda McIntyre. We also gave a shout-out to our Green Team. Thank you to Mr. Lamar and Ms. Moriarty for, for leading that up, and those of you that were able to join, to join them. Tomorrow, I had, and I believe Mr. Sell's going as well, to the UVM Teacher of the Year Celebration. So Lori Elliott, one of our very own special educators, was nominated this year, so she will be recognized at the 44th Annual Outstanding Educator Awards tomorrow, which is great. And Ms. Q has also been a recipient of that, too. So, we're very lucky, we have lots of talented teachers. There's a number of celebrations that I've listed in here, for those of you that are interested. Some of our challenges continue to be the, our homeless families' significant needs within the school, as well as many of them have lost their vouchers, so they are in multiple areas, but still attending our school. So they just have, they have a lot of needs, and we're supporting them the best that we can. And we do continue to be short-staffed, so if any of you know of anybody that would like to sub, we welcome any and all substitutes. Feel free to reach out. We are looking to hire preschool parent educator, and our enrollment numbers continue to be strong. I think I shared this last time, we have 10 tuition students. So we have 10 students that are tuitioning to our middle school, which is the largest number since I've been at Rutland Town, which is great. Any questions on that before we move into some of our FastBridge testing? Yes?
Town of Rutland, the police department is pretty close on finding a school resource officer.
Yes.
So, well, I think we have a police committee meeting next week, and we'll have a little more information about that, and maybe move it forward.
Okay, I have asked, and all I heard was, "An offer has been extended."
Okay.
But last meeting, I was told they were in background. Not really sure what that means, I can guess, but, so Teddy told me to sit tight.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll highlight some of our FastBridge screeners. Tina, can show it up here. So we give literacy and math screeners three times a year. So I'll show some of this, the, our data here. So the first one that we have is our early reading for kindergarten through 1st grade. So on the left, you'll see the district, and then on the right, you will see how Rutland Town is doing.
Do you want to just explain, just for.
Sure.
People that don't know.
Yeah.
The colors and numbers.
Yeah, sure. So the, the purple, those students are at, that's a good color, so they are at low risk. The pink, the pinkish color, they're at some risk, and then the red, they're at high risk.
Of what?
Of being need of intervention, of support. So this one is basically letter sounds, letter ID, and fluency.
Only for kindergarten and 1st grade, so those are like very early literacy skills.
Sorry, I moved John to grades 2 and 3. I thought you were done.
No, that's okay. So CBM reading, this is for grades 2 to 3. And this is words per minute, how quickly and accurately you can read.
So for this one, a kid reads to a teacher, teacher has their computer, and they mark how much, how many words they get correct within that one minute.
So the next one is auto reading, so this is 4th through 9th grade. So this is spelling, so selecting the correctly spelled word, sounds, can you correctly identify the sounds, and some morphology.
This kind of thing will like break apart words, morphemes like bio, and ask what that means. Different, different, has to do a lot with like, with Ms. Q last year gave a presentation on OG, and a lot of those kinds of skills are in there, especially with morphemes. So it measures a lot of that. And this one is a timed one, there's a timed element here, too, so it takes, you have to know quickly, a lot of the skills that happen on this assessment.
And these are all just the primary test for the year. They're, the kids get this two more times, and then we're able to track growth over the year, and make sure that kids are improving.
And that's our main. And that's our main goal, we want to see growth, no matter where kids are. So, this looks great, but we want to continue to see them grow. So, as Tina said, usually we'll see some more bar graphs later on in the year, because this is the first test, first screener part of me, that happens in the fall, winter, and then again in the spring. So, A reading, this is where the kids read a passage and then answer questions, and this one's not timed.
Correct.
Yep.
And are these numbers also compared to national? Is this like from a national database? Where they're, is that how they're getting those?
Well, these two bars, we're comparing district to.
Right, but the numbers are coming from, they're being compared to a standardized.
Yes, standardized test, yes. Sorry.
It's okay. Onto the math data.
Okay. So, the first graph that you see here is early math for kindergarten through first grade. So, this is like number ID and counting. We may send some of these in emails to Krista Bragg often, and he's like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I see it." The second one, A math, grades two through nine, that's more math problem solving. Again, Rutland Town is on the right.
I think that was the last one.
How long have we been using this system?
This is the second year that we've fully used it, implemented it.
The year before that, we did maps, NIWA maps.
Something similar, though?
Yeah, it was another.
My question is, have we noticed the data for K and 1 to improve since we've, since pre-Ks showed up?
I don't think we've been using it long enough to know.
Yeah, it's.
And it's too different from maps to be able to tell.
Of course it is.
Because it tests very differently.
Yeah, it's a really, that's a really good question, though.
It'd be nice to see other, I mean, it's universal, obviously, but other schools that don't have the attachment of the pre-K, or they're sending them out to the, if there's a lot of value, I'm sure there is, but have some data to back it up. That's it. Thank you.
And then, I think, the CIP update.
Yep.
Is there anything you want me to share, or?
I didn't know if you wanted to. I had Christine put the, this continuous improvement plan in the drive. It's on our website, so it's basically, every school should have an action plan of how are we going to improve. And then we work together collectively. Often we'll have kids, other various stakeholders involved in this, and last year, we just, as we were directed to dust it off, because it's pretty much the same. So, really, we have areas of safe and healthy schools, and we want to increase student achievement. So, the first one for safe and healthy schools, I'll let Mr. Lamar talk a little bit about.
Yeah, so we have a.
Don't jinx us, though.
No, I won't.
Okay.
We have a great behavior team at the school, and we plan, we plan what activities we're going to do. We take a look at data, especially compared to last year, and see how many behavior referrals there are, take a look at major incidents, things like bullying, harassment, and what's going on in the school. So, we pull that data and take a look at it together. We make a plan for the year of how we're going to address that, how we're going to involve the teachers. We have PLC leaders that we use, and we kind of run ideas and different things by them. And one of, one of the highlights that we've had is, while last year, we had quite a few, quite an uptick in what we call HHBs, which are hazing harassment and bullying incidents. The state of Vermont has legally mandated procedures that schools have to follow if you come across a situation where you have any kind of HHB, we call them. And last year, we had quite an uptick, and at this point, last year, we had, we had quite a few. I don't have the number right off my head, but fortunately, at this point this year, we've only had two, trying not to jinx us, as compared to last year, where I want to say at this point, we were upwards of probably like 10, seven to 10. So, fortunately, we have reduced that amount. Again, knock on wood right now, and I'm trying not to jinx us, really, because I already kind of did earlier this week, talking about it and celebrating with our PLC leaders, but.
We reviewed our SEP in PLC, and when Mike said that, I said, "Don't say that you're going to jinx yourself." And before noon the next day, there were a couple instances that required a lot of work on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oops, my bad. So, hopefully we don't do that again. But, so the team meets and does that. As a part of that, we just identified a lot of kids needed some work in advocacy, and advocating for their friends when they're in a situation such as like an HHB, it could be anything, but, but in that particularly. So, the behavior team, myself, we go around to the different TAs and classrooms, and we teach them these advocacy lessons, like what kinds of ways and what kinds of things can you do to help your friend in that kind of a situation. We've seen some positive results from that, especially last year, even including to this year, and kids use that kind of language that we've taught them in those situations to come to us. Like, "I'm reporting this situation because it didn't feel right," which is exactly what we teach them to do and what they need to do. In the elementary grades, we do, we have our team working on positive, proactive, I mean, groups with kids. So, a lot of those early skills, like, "What should you do when you feel angry?" Like, "How do you approach that?" You get into an argument with a friend, your friend, you want the ball, but your friend has it. Well, how can you, how can you deal with that situation instead of like reacting physically or something? So, our team is working through that as well for the younger grades, a little bit more, a little bit smaller groups than what the middle school would get for what we're doing for them. So, fortunately, we're on a really good track. I think our incident referrals overall are down for the year as compared to last year. I haven't been able to pull that data yet, but I think just based on what I've seen and handled, that appears to be the case. So, I think we're on a really good track.
Thank you.
And I would say too, as I'm sure everybody says since COVID, even though it's been some time since then, there is a lot of communication through email and social media that kids get involved in, and we're really trying to just educate our students and our parents as well about monitoring that, and it, would you say it to a person's face, you shouldn't put it in writing. And these are just skills that, you know, sometimes they repeat things that they hear, not really knowing the intent, and our goal is just, we want to help raise kind, respectful, hard-working kids when, when they leave us. So, Mr. Lamar and I always say, "We'd rather you make these mistakes now, because we're going to take the time to talk and work through this, than maybe when you're in high school where there's just a consequence and you don't get that opportunity." So, we're still working through that, and with parents as well. Yeah. And then our other areas are, of course, what we're in school for, right, academic achievement. So, we, we want to increase our growth in both ELA and math, and we're very fortunate, like I said, we've, we have, we're ahead of the game for that science of reading, and with Sue and other teachers' expertise, bringing in more of the writing. Becky Curtis is our math interventionist at Rutland Town, so we're moving forward with our new Bridges math curriculum as well, and continuing those professional development opportunities. We have staff that, all of them consider themselves lifelong learners, and we're continuing to push our kids as much as we can. And then within that, we have our multi-tiered systems of support, which the state of Vermont requires, has some requirements, but we've always had it at Rutland Town. We have some really good safety nets to make sure we're catching kids. So, I don't know if you want to talk a little about, because Mike leads our multi-tier system, the support team.
Yeah, so we have, our GRCSU has a uniform procedures for how to approach it when a student flags on those screeners that you saw earlier, that were up there, sorry, not anymore, but those assessments will show teachers how each kid did on those, and then based on that data, a teacher may need to essentially work with that kiddo a little bit more. And depending on how that goes, they may need to then make a referral to an interventionist, such as Ms. Q, works with our elementary kiddos who need a little extra help in reading. So, we have that procedure set, and we meet with those families every, every eight weeks in the team to measure progress and see how the kiddo is doing. It's more of a fluid process, so they could come in eight weeks, and then they may head on out, because maybe they get the boost that they need, the data looks good, so then out they go. Sometimes they stay in a little bit longer, but we keep it a fluid process so that we can, we can make sure that we're measuring their success, and the team is all, is a think tank for what they can do to help the kiddo get that extra help that they need. And then we're on to that. So, we've done our first round, so we're on to our second.
Thank you. Next up is our finance. Anyone have questions for Lewis about the monthly reports? Before we start the presentation on the school budget cost drivers, I really want to thank everyone that came from the community, including our two senators, Terry Williams and Brian Collmore, and David Weeks, since his regrets, he wasn't able to make it tonight, and also our representative-elect, Chris Howland, and parent Megan Robertson, and teacher Sue Quinell. We really appreciate you being here and listening to what's going on and what's affecting the budget, and what kind of goes into the thought process behind our choices that we make when we approve the budget. So, without further ado, I'll turn this over to Kristen Lewis.
Thanks, Tina. So, as part of the, our GRCSU budget communication plan that we, we're working with all of our local districts on, excuse me, we, education funding in Vermont is very complex. It's not an easy thing. I've now worked, lived and worked in three different states, and I thought Illinois and Chicago area was bad, and then New Jersey, you know, Jersey City was bad, and then get to Vermont, and it's like, wow, it's like, you know, another whole issue, but it's very sophisticated, very nuanced. There are a lot of impacts to our, to our budget. And so, what we felt would be most prudent to do tonight was just to take a look at, as, you know, look at our first draft of budget, just understand, when we build out a budget, what are some of these influences, what are some of the impacts? This is not explaining, or, you know, excusing, or anything else. It really is just understanding, when we build out a budget, you know, what, what influences do we have here? And so, we've identified six different influences on our school budgets, particularly, we'll talk about Rutland Town's school budget. First is personnel costs. We also have the statewide health insurance, which I talked about for VHI. We're looking at inflation or CPI. We have special ed costs, facility repairs, and school construction, and then tuition, which, you know, has a larger impact here on Rutland Town, and so have other districts, and that's particularly around school choice, not district students, since Rutland Town does not have a high school, therefore, they have to tuition outs, you know, for high school. That does have an impact, particularly when we look at percentage of students who may attend Rutland High, who has a, which we'll talk about a little bit later on, a larger tuition than some of our other area high schools, and that does impact our budget.
So, I think it's worth also noting that, Sue, what we're going to talk about tonight in this document is what's impacting our budget that's set by the Rutland Town Board. After the Rutland Town Board sets their budget, we then start shifting our focus to the tax rate, and there's different drivers that impact the tax rate, and the budget creation is one of those drivers that impacts the tax rate, as well as many other drivers that are, a lot of things that are coming from either the state level and some of our local levels, such as CLA. But in this document, we're not talking about any of those outside factors, we're just looking at the creation of the budget process.
Good. And so, what we've done in this next slide, and this slide will be available on the website, so anyone can download it and take a look at it. So, if you can't get the information, it's too small to read, we will have it available, and if you can't find it, please just email myself, or Tina will be more happy to get that to you. So, what we wanted to do was, just in a nice pie chart, really just take a look at, when you put everything together, just really what is that cost breakdown? Now, let Lewis kind of talk about, you know, how it's broken down, and just what each of these categories represents.
So, we try to highlight some of the larger areas. I mean, there's many different types of expense in the budget, but these are the more common, larger, significant cost drivers. So, personnel costs, these would be all employees that are employed by Rutland Town School District, so this would be our teachers, our paraeducators, our maintenance staff, and this includes both wages and all of the benefits associated with those staff members. So, personnel cost makes up approximately 41.9% of the Rutland Town budget. But I would also add that some of these other categories below include personnel cost, but they're not personnel cost directly in the Rutland Town budget, they're in the SU budget that's being passed down. So, I can go, I'll go into more details when I get to those other areas down below. Tuition, that's the second largest area, because Rutland Town is, only operates a pre-K eight. All nine through 12 students have secondary choice, they could attend any Vermont public school, and we pay up to the announced rate for that school, or they could attend any Vermont or out-of-state independent approved school, and for those schools, we pay up to the state average, which is currently $19,774. The personnel cost is a smaller percentage in Rutland Town because you're tuitioning out, and you're not running a K-12. Typically, when we look at a district that's running a pre-K-12, those personnel costs are a lot larger portion of the budget. Assessments, this is the cost that the SU is passing down. So, the SU has two, two main budgets. They have the general fund budget, which is the central, it's the central office, which is business office, superintendent's office, curriculum, technology. So, that makes up the general fund. And then there's the second piece is all of special education. So, in, within that category, it's mostly personnel cost for the special ed, it's special educators, paraeducators, psychologists, all of that goes into the special ed section, and we'll talk a little bit, there's another slide on special education. So, we accumulate all those expenses at the SU, and then those SU's are assessed back to the district based on an allocation metric. So, for this general fund, they, we took a look at the total ADM, and we bill Rutland Town based on their portion of the, of the SU's total ADM. And for special ed, we do the same thing, we look at a metric based on number of IEP students, and we bill Rutland Town for a portion based on how many IEP students they have in the SU. The next section is SU's purchased services, and these are services that are paid for by the SU and then billed back directly to Rutland Town based on, and, and the other districts in our SU, based on who's using those services. So, for example, we try to do bulk ordering, or, so if we, for example, if we have a program that the whole SU is using, we'll contract that out at the SU, because we can get cheaper pricing, and then we'll bill back the districts based on who's using that software program, or how much they're using that software program. Another form of purchase services is employees. So, if we have an employee that's partially grant-funded, that's for a grant that's coming through the SU, we'll make that employee an SU employee, and we'll pay for a portion of the salary to the grant, and then whatever's not covered by the grant, we'll bill back to Rutland Town for their portion. Transportation, this is for our buses to transport students to and from school, as well as for field trips. Debt, this is for any bonds or loans that Rutland Town has taken out. This is typically just long-term debt, not any short-term debt, like we do take out an annual tax anticipation loan just to help our cash flow for the year. That's not included in this. This is just when the school takes out a bond to do a school improvement, so like if they need to replace the roof, they would take out a loan and then pay that out over 10, 20 years. And other is really just a catch-all for any other expenses that's not already mentioned. The biggest piece of this would probably be our maintenance budget, so it would include electricity, repairs, fuel oil, and then the supplies for the whole school. So, anything from buying pencils to buying toilet paper, or any other supplies that they needed.
So, the next, the first drivers today is just the impact of personnel costs. You know, as Louis highlighted, typically, personnel costs make up 60 to 80% of a budget, and I think where, as Louis discussed, when we saw that last slide, it was like it was 41.9, but also, some of those staffing were, like I said, in the assessments and some of the other areas, but, so that really is one of the main drivers of a school budget. It's a kind of fix. When we say fixed, that's because, you know, our staff, whether it be teachers, or staff, it's done collectively bargained, and that's bargained as an SU. We do not bargain through individual districts, so as I said earlier in the meeting, we are out negotiations at SU, we negotiate with all teachers, so Rutland Town, Wells Springs, Corey Valley, and, you know, are all negotiating together within the SU. That's part of, you know, just our, you know, agreements that they're setting the bylaws, and that's how it's going to be done. So, we also look at the salaries and the wages. And so, when people take a look at just the salaries, I know, when I was a teacher, I'd say, "Oh, here's my take-home pay," but when we really look at the benefits, are an important part of that package. So, so a teacher may say, "That's $60,000," that's what's in their contract, but they may receive, say, you know, $35,000 with the benefits, that goes on the book. So, a teacher really on the books is $95,000. And so, that's why we looked at the, you know, we put this, this bar graph, you see the blue, and in the red, you see that really what is that salary part, and then you can also look at the benefit parts. Now, let's see what I'm talking about.
And the benefits, so the benefits makes up about 25 to 30% of the total compensation package, and it varies by employee. So, if an employee that's taking a single health insurance plan is going to be a lot different than an employee that's taking a family health insurance plan. But on average, the average cost of benefits for an employee is 25 to 30% of the total compensation. for an employee is twenty-five to thirty percent of the total compensation.
And what's interesting is that the wages part, that is something which is collectively bargained, but the benefits is something which is out of our control. We know it's part of the CBA, but said before that we negotiate statewide. So therefore, we are the whim of the VHI board. As they, like I said, this year they're down from sixteen point four percent, but still relatively high, is eleven point nine percent. So, you know, you can see that. That's why you see this trending upwards. You know, obviously last year, the highest because it's sixteen point four percent, but does impact us. And so when you have that benefits, and as Louis said, depends on staff, you know, we have people taking a single plan, may see the benefits lower a little bit, but you know, family plan, it could be a much higher cost. And so that does impact us. Obviously, when we look to hire, we look to staff, our goal really is looking at optimal class sizes. You'll hear a lot about, I think, the Commission on Public Education, you know, through, you hear a lot about class sizes. And I think it's something which, you know, we as a board to take a look at, as a SU need to take a look at really is, what are those optimal class sizes? You have to make sure that we are meeting student needs. We can, we can look at having, you know, I said to Tina earlier today, I worked in a suburban school as a teacher. I had, you know, classes of between thirty and forty kids just by myself. Now, and, you know, it's had just students with needs, it's that. And wasn't ideal, but that's just how it was. And I think what, not optimal, but that's what we're looking to go to, but we also make sure we're balancing, you know, that's really what is appropriate to meet our kids' needs. And so that's a discussion that we have to have, and what impact that may have in terms of staffing costs. And then I said before, the staff salaries aren't collectively bargained as an SU. So Louis, anything you want to add to that?
Nothing.
Okay. So the next driver, we've talked about this before, just the cost of statewide health insurance. So you can see here the graph, which just kind of reflects where we're at to the trend lines. I think where, just a few highlights here is just the spending on health insurance premiums only in twenty, FY twenty-three was two hundred and eleven million dollars. In FY twenty-four is two hundred and thirty-one million dollars. So you can see where, you know, the premiums are going up and the impact that that has. You know, like I said, we were, you know, pleasantly surprised. I say this because I'm still not happy about the double digit, but when you saw where the, you know, the private sector was around twenty, over twenty percent, you know, we thought that, you know, we may be around that, but like I said, you know, dropped it to eleven point nine percent. And it still impacted our budget, but we'd love to see that continue to trend the other way. But
As you can see, five out of the last six years are double digits. And that has a significant impact on the budget. Health insurance makes up approximately nine percent of our overall budget, just for health insurance.
If I may, on this particular graph.
Yes.
I would just move to the increases year over year. I mean, it's kind of misleading that the graph's going down. These are increases. It's not like we step down. Our spending has gone up every year. It's kind of like when we talk about inflation. We have inflation under control. We, it was up twenty-two percent. Now it's only, it's going up off that base. So this is kind of misleading to say, you know, and it's not, nothing against us, but like, that, seventy percent of our budget's personnel, and thirty percent of that is now becoming healthcare, which is running away unchecked and out of our control.
Right. It's right. I mean, saying like, you know, we're thirty million dollars in debt, but this year only ten million dollars in debt. Still in debt. It's still not a good place to be. And I think that's, you're right. I think when we look at sixteen point four last year, you know, it hurts. And eleven point nine is going to hurt as well. But I think that's, you're right. When you look at this graph, it really is just where we are at in terms of premiums. It's not, you know, it's still going to have an impact on our local budgets. The inflation that's impact on our schools, this goes without saying, you know, as individuals, as we stop at the gas station, you know, as we go to the grocery store, we all know, you know, you know, we've seen the cost, you know, the grocery bills, you know, the cost to fill up our vehicles. So the same hit that a consumer at home is, schools are, you know, are bad as well. And I think we talked about, you know, Louis alluded to this, one of the things we try to do as an SU is our economies of scale. That's one of the benefits of being an SU is, we're looking at how do we purchase in bulk, you know, so not just, you know, Rutland Town District, but, you know, combined with Corey Valley and Wells, you know, so we can try to lower costs. And it's something which we are, we work, Louis and I work very closely with our facilities directors in trying to do this, you know, trying to find ways to reduce that cost. But at the end of the day, inflation does have an impact on us, you know, fuel costs, energy costs, it's something which are beyond our control. So, you know, it said, you know, the contractual obligations is we go out to, you know, vendor contracts, we're looking at, you know, food service or transportation with BETA. Obviously, that's going to have an impact, you know, in terms of, you know, fuel and, you know, just price of food. And I know you deal with directly with both these.
And inflation, I mean, it touches every aspect of our budget, because even if it's not direct, where we're going on buying a product, it could be indirect, where we're paying tuition to a district. So a district's whose costs are going up are going to set a higher announced tuition to cover their cost when we look at wage increases and benefit increases. Those are as a result of inflation, because the market, the inflation is driving the salary market. So there's no, I don't think there's any part of our budget that is not impacted by the cost of inflation.
And just a number, at the end of September twenty twenty-four, the New England CPI was at three point four percent. And we have, the next is just a chart. You can see over the past four years, I know it's very busy. There's a lot there, but you can just see like the all items and the all items when you take out food and energy costs. You can just kind of see where the CPI is, has been and where it is. But it does, like I said, does have an impact on, on us as districts and how we operate. Next, we'll talk about special ed funding challenges. Louis, I'll have to kind of talk some of these.
So special education is one of those items that's part of the assessment. It's not directly in Rutland Town's budget. It's at the SU and assessed back to Rutland Town based on that, the number of IEP students they have. The special education budget is made up of all special education expenses. And I've broken it down in this pie graph based on the different categories. So as you can see, personnel cost is the biggest category in the blue, and that's at, what, seventy-seven percent? And the next area is tuition. So those are for students that were not servicing directly in our schools, who are sending them to outside placements, whether it be a parental choice or an IEP team decision. And that's the section green, that's ten percent. Excess costs, the section in red, those are students that are attending a school through parent choice, and they're attending a regular ed school, but then they're also getting IEP services. So the services that we pay to the school for those IEP services. So for example, if a student's attending More River for high school choice, we pay the school regular ed tuition, but then on top of that, if they have any IEP needs, we're paying for IEP services, and that falls into that excess cost category. Professional services are just services that we're outsourcing, whether it be for speech pathologist services or psychologist services. There's not, there's some instances where we can't service those with our in-house employees. We have to outsource that work for one reason or another. Transportation, that's the category in orange. That's been a growing category over the last few years. And that's mostly for those students who are, again, are outside placements. If we have a student that, the team determines that maybe they're going to go to Manchester Village School, we have to provide transportation for that student. And transportation is expensive and a growing category, especially it's, we could be sending only one student to that school. So to send a bus all the way to Manchester, say, from Rutland or Proctor, is a high cost on a per student basis. And then the other category, again, is anything that, a catch-all for anything that's not included. So supplies, travel, software programs, stuff like that. The total SU budget is approximately nine million dollars for the SU, but we do receive a significant portion of that back as revenue from the state. There's a state appropriation called the Census Block Grant. This is a new appropriation in the last four years through Act one seventy-three. Prior to Act one seventy-three, all schools were on a reimbursable model, meaning for every dollar that they spent in special ed funds, they got a percentage of that back in reimbursement. And it usually averaged around a fifty-five percent reimbursement rate. With Act one seventy-three, it eliminated the reimbursable model and moves to this just a block grant model, so that every district receives a flat amount on a per student basis. So the bad thing about that is if you have a student that moves in after your budget is set, you're not receiving any additional funding for that student, but you have to cover those costs. When Act one seventy-three was initiated, there was a transition period. It's a four-year transition period, and we're, next year FY twenty-six is year four of that transition. During the transition, there was a sliding scale to step everybody up to that block grant amount. And prior to Act one seventy-three, if you were a low-spending district, then over those four years, you were going to see an increase in funding. And if you were a high-spending district, you were seeing a decrease in funding. GRCSU was a low-spending district, so we have been seeing a greater amount of revenue coming over the last four years. So where the NEAP has been, is at three point four this year, which would be the increase in the block grant. We saw a ten percent increase in our funding this year because we were a low spender, so we're seeing our, our block grant increase. Looking at the, following year FY twenty-seven, we will see that block grant start to level off and just see just the average increase that everybody else sees.
Any idea of that block grant, how much of that's federally funded?
That is a state appropriation. I don't know if any of that is coming from federals. We also receive a federal IDB grant, which is not part of the block grant, but that is a federal grant that we, entitlement grant we receive every year, which is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's separate from the state appropriation. There's other revenue sources that go into this category. There's a triple E grant, which is for pre-K students. There's an extraordinary reimbursement grant, which is for those students that are a lot higher cost due to extreme needs. And so for those students, you're receiving funds in addition to your block grant. So after all of that, we're, the SU is paying, I think it's approximately four million dollars, the assessment. So a large portion of it is being covered by state revenue, state and federal revenue.
Thanks. The next driver is around school construction, maintaining, improving our facilities. This is obviously is a major concern, state of Vermont, you know, know that right now, the projected facilities needs for the state is well over two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. And then I know that the projections through the next two decades, which they believe is undercounted, actually is six billion, three hundred and fifty-two million dollars right on there. So, you know, we do have a, you know, the state of Vermont, a facility issue in terms of, we have aging facilities that's, we have to maintain, we have to, you know, repair, you know, make sure that, you know, it's safe for students and staff to work in. And we're just like everyone else. So I think one of the, we have a five-year plan in place that Sarah and Mike and with our facility director Kelly Tria have put together, which outlines some of the smaller items and big ticket items. But some of the items that we have to be aware of is that there's a need to replace flooring in Rutland Town School and any company asbestos removal and abatement that'll come to, because that tile was laid. And we know that, you know, that when we remove this, that there will be asbestos underneath there. It's contained, it's, you know, right now, but
You can feel it in some spots when you walk.
Right. So, but, so there's a cost there. We're also looking at replacing the roof. We're at the end of its age or
We just realized our roof is, in twenty twenty-five, it'll be thirty years old.
Right.
So we got to maintain our building.
As well as just the heating, ventilation, air conditioning system, the HVAC system. So those are some big ticket items, but there are a lot of other little items that, you know, that do add up as well. So, but like I said, that is something which is, we just have to be aware of as we build our budgets. That's, you know, so we have all these other factors, you know, personnel, but the, maintaining our facilities is important as well. If our facility falls or disrepair, or if we, you know, ignore a hundred dollar repair or a thousand dollar repair, that could become pretty quickly a twenty-five thousand dollar repair down the road. So we just have to make sure that, you know, Sarah and Mike and Kelly, you know, we're very closely, just keep an eye on things and just doing proper maintenance before a small problem becomes a major one for all of us. The last driver that we're going to talk about is just tuition costs. And I know Louis had talked about this a little bit before, so I'm not going to really kind of go too much over through, through this, but I think what the charts, oh, next one might be good, Tina, if you want. Or is there anything to highlight there? I know you've covered a lot of that.
I think we covered most of it, but, I mean, the big unknown here is we're making an assumption or an estimate of how many tuition students we're going to be paying for next year when we're setting this budget. And so any families that move in, move into town after we've set the budget, if you have a family with three students moving to town at twenty-two thousand dollars, that's a sixty thousand dollar budget change that was unexpected. So a lot of times, this could be definitely a budget driver, and sometimes we, it could be just, it could have a budget impact in our favor as well. But it's really an unknown.
And the one thing I wanted to highlight, and I know Louis talked about this, but it is that Rutland Town School District is responsible for paying the full announced tuition for any Vermont school. So even though the, the average is here is what, nineteen thousand seven seventy-four, I believe, if a local district, district in the area says, we're going to set our tuition at twenty-five thousand dollars, that's what, you know, Rutland Town School District has to pay. And what's happening now also with independent schools is that while an independent school may have been charging in the past sixteen thousand dollars, but now, you know, that, well, we can, you know, charge up to the state average. So now we're seeing some of these independent schools, tuition's starting to increase as well. So that does have an impact on our budget as well. So these are just things that are out of our control. Yes.
Question. And I understand the state steps in and then rechecks these tuitions to give someone an allowable tuition?
For the public, for Vermont Public Schools, there is a reconciliation after the year to determine what an allowable tuition is. And if their announced tuition was different from the allowable outside of three percent window, then there is an additional charge or a refund.
My question, not to you guys, more for the audience in the room, where you guys are going, is we're publishing these equalized per pupil student numbers, right? I don't know what Rutland City says, eleven thousand five hundred per student? That's how they're setting
I didn't have that.
Well, it's called offhand, twelve thousand, but that's where we're setting our property tax rates on, twelve thousand per student, yet they're charging us twenty-two thousand per student. So why are they allowed to charge ten grand more than we're setting our property tax rates at? And I'm not asking you that more for when we're asking the questions up there. If that's how we're setting our property tax rates, this is what you guys are spending per kid, how are you allowed to then charge another kid in our, in our state, double that? Is that cost shifting it to Rutland Town? Or is that the true cost?
There's just different metrics that they use.
And like I said, we want to just bring this up so people are aware that when, you know, a child matriculates into high school and where they go, that, you know, we, there's a bill that follows them. And so, you know, we're expected to pay that. And so there, but there is cost that is out of our control there. Like, we can control, regulate within our SU, you know, say Corey Valley, but, you know, outside districts and schools, they're out of our control. So I just want to highlight that. So, so as I said before at the beginning, this really is just, as we sit down, we look at budgets, we just want to make some, you know, community members aware of just the complexities, these, you know, some of these factors that do influence our budget. And, you know, obviously, there are things that are within our control and there are things that are without our control. And so as we go through this process, our goal as a board, work with the admin, it really is to make sure that we, you know, that we are being fiscally responsible, but also make sure we're reading our students' needs. And that's, it's a challenge at times, because you see some of these drivers really, you know, cause us to really, you know, consider, you know, some programming or staffing that may impact student needs. So I don't know.
Thank you very much, Kristen Lewis, for putting that together. Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
Just a comment, you know, I know two hundred weeks is on the School Education Committee, and, and next month, it starts all over again, because the treasurer has to announce the education tax rate, which we don't have a clue what it is. I'm also on the Health and Welfare Committee, so I understand that medical insurance is a big cost driver. And we just heard that MVP and Cigna are ready to pull out of the state. So I don't know the solution, but I, but I can tell you that the more you guys can keep us informed, give us a list of recommendations. I know I've talked to Louis before about, you know, tuition costs. We have to send a tuition, student wants to go out of the, out of the district, and that what they get charged is, is real cost driver for you. So we also know, we had a bill last year, it was We also know, we had a bill last year, it was H six thirty, which they called the BOCs bill, but it's a statewide effort to consolidate all services, including, uh, special education needs, uh, and that didn't go anywhere. So, um, I, I, I really feel your pain. I'm, I'm a taxpayer too, so, um, I wish I had a solution for it, but for, the more you can inform us of what you think you need for, uh, when we go back to the, to the Senate Education Committee, that definitely will help everybody, I think.
Thanks, sir.
So, Lewis, did you want to go over the budget?
All right. So next, we're looking at the first draft of the Rutland Town, uh, budget. Um, so last night, we did, um, have an SU board meeting and we approved the SU budget.
Lewis, did you want me to put it up there?
I don't think...
It's, we can't write? What?
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay.
Um, so last night, we approved the SU budget. Uh, those changes were not, are not included in anything that we're gonna discuss tonight, uh, just because this, the budget had to be presented to the board, um, as of last Friday. Um, so those, anything that changed from the first draft to the second draft last night, uh, will be included in the next draft of the Rutland Town budget. Um, so the, the budget you have in front of you, I'm just gonna just highlight some of the changes. Uh, so what we did is we, we look at, uh, what we have currently in place and we, we bring everything back. And then I've met with, uh, the administration, um, to discuss, okay, what changes do they need, um, as part of, of what they need in the school?
I'll just share the summary of changes, so it's a little easier.
If those changes are, are minor, they're, they're already included in the budget, and as far as this year's, everything that, any feedback that I did get from the administration is included. Um, but typically, the process is I meet with them, they, they give me their, what they need, um, and then I will include anything that, that's in the, anything that comes out of that meeting in the budget. Anything that comes out of that meeting that's not in the budget would just be a note. Um, at this point, there, there's no notes. Um, so total expense based on that i- is currently up by three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, which is a three point six percent increase. Uh, total education spending is only up thirty-five thousand, uh, which is a point three percent increase. Um, and so the reason for the big difference there is that Rutland Town had a very large surplus last year, uh, of four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And so currently, that full surplus is in this budget as revenue. So the board has a couple of options with that, to use that surplus. Um, one is to use that all as a revenue to give back to their taxpayers. Um, one of the other op, simpler options is to put an item on the ballot, um, asking the taxpayers permission to put, to use that money for something else, such as putting it into a reserve fund. But at this time, all of that is in the budget.
Can you just remind everyone why it was so large?
Yep. Um, so back in August, I did provide an update to the board as to the cause of that, and approximately half of that surplus was, uh, due to, uh, revenue, unexpected revenue increases. Um, there was additional tuition revenue for students that were from outside of Rutland Town, that were coming into Rutland Town, and we, we, we set a tuition rate. Um, so for every tuition student, uh, that's attending, I believe our rate was sixteen thousand five hundred dollars last year. Um, we didn't budget for as many students as we had last year, so that was a big part of the surplus. Also, uh, interest rates have been very high in these last few years, so we had approximately at thirty-eight thousand dollars in additional interest ex, uh, revenue. Um, and then we had some prior year refunds that we received. We received a, a prior year tuition refund, which, um, goes back to what Colin mentioned earlier about the allowable tuition. And then we also had an assessment refund. Um, so that makes up about half of the surplus. The other half of the surplus was, uh, from, I think, a small portion of it was from tuition savings. Uh, the largest piece was from salary and benefit savings, and that's was due to open positions that weren't, weren't filled, as well as, um, open position, there was an open, there was a position that was filled, but was in the budget, but was grant-funded for last year. So with the full amount of that position, um, had resulted in local savings. Uh, so even though we paid for it through the grant, we ha, also had it in our budget, um, so we got the benefit of having that whole position as, as savings. With Esser going away, Esser ended on September thirtieth, uh, we, we do anticipate seeing smaller, um, surpluses going forward. Um, there's still the one big unknown with Rutland Town budget, as well as any budget that has tuition in it, is that can change from year to year based on how many students we estimate and versus how many students actually attend that secondary school. Um, so, I mean, five students, again, five students could result in a hundred thousand dollars, and, and so five students is a small percentage, but a hundred thousand, it sounds like a lot of money. Um, so we can have a significant surplus still if we have a, a big change in tuition students. Um, so going back to the highlights, um, so education spend, as I said, education spending, which is the amount that, education spending is total expense minus any local revenues, that is the amount that we will be raising in property taxes. So when we start looking at that tax rate calculation, we won't talk so much about expense, we'll talk about education spending. Um, some other items that are included in this budget that are having an impact, uh, there's the eleven point nine percent increase in health insurance, uh, which is an eighty thousand dollar increase. Uh, there's small increases in multiple lines that are, that are, that were underfunded, but they're not having a significant impact. Uh, transportation expense decreased due to an increase in revenue. Uh, we do receive approximately forty-five percent, uh, reimbursement for t- any transportation expenses, and so, um, there is a lag in that, lag in that revenue that we receive, is a two-year lag, and, and so this year, we're seeing that revenue increase, which is resulting in our total expense decreasing. Secondary tuition right now, I'm estimating to be a hundred and nine thousand dollar increase, and that's due to both the increase in tuition rates, um, but also our eighth grade class that's moving up to ninth grade is a lot larger than the number of twelfth graders that are graduating. So that's adding to our total student count.
We are almost like over our class size, what it should be, with a lot of kids.
So we're budgeting forty-five students moving to ninth grade, um, and approximately thirty-seven students that are graduating, so that difference is the difference that's being made up into this budget.
But if we have forty-nine students in the class, you're anticipating four of them won't need tuition?
I could connect, I'll connect with Sarah. The number I was given was forty-five, so.
No, I update on my principal's report, you can see the numbers I updated.
Okay.
If you wanna take a peek. We've got a few kids left.
Yep. Um, as I mentioned earlier, SU assessments are based on the first draft. Um, there wasn't a, a lot of changes, but, uh, one of the big changes from the first draft to the second draft was, uh, the special education budget went from an increase in the first draft of one point eight percent to a decrease of seven, approximately seven thousand, which is a zero percent. Um, so that'll have a small impact on this budget, uh, favorably to Rutland Town. Uh, there's no staffing changes in this budget. Um, and as, as I mentioned, the surplus was an increase of two hundred and seventy thousand in revenue. Uh, we had some surplus the prior year, so not, the whole four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is not new, uh, only two hundred and seventy thousand of that is, is a, an increase in revenue. Uh, and then the last piece, I just wanted to, so, uh, there is an ELL revenue that's in there. Um, there is both a, a revenue and an offsetting expense. This is a new category of grant that we received from the state. Uh, if you have between one to five students that qualify for ELL, you receive a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. Um, and then we're looking at the SU of providing those ELL services, and so, um, you have the twenty-five thousand as a revenue, and then you'll have the twenty-five thousand as a purchase service to the SU to pay for whatever services that are being created for that student.
English language learners.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah. Thank you. So, so those are the highlights. Um, I, I'm not gonna go through all the details of the budget, but, I mean, the main piece is staffing, and there is no staffing changes, it's just a matter of bringing those students back, those staffing members back, uh, accommodating for any increase, or any changes and increases in benefits, as well as, uh, wages.
Lewis? So, you mentioned the unanticipated surplus, right? And we've seen the legislature deal with what we call one-time money. Uh, some of it came from, uh, the federal government, and we figured out how to spend it pretty quickly. Um, is, is that sort of one of those things that could be considered one-time money? And then you mentioned that maybe you put it out to the taxpayers to decide what to do with it, kinda thing.
So, so definitely, it is, it is one-time money, and surpluses are both good and bad, because, um, if you put them aside into a reserve fund, then, then that's fine, that's good, um, it's just saving money for a rainy day.
Right.
Uh, the bad side is if you use it as a revenue, then the following year...
Exactly.
If you don't have another surplus, then you're starting that much in the hole.
Yeah.
So right now, if we, uh, right now, we have four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in there as one-time revenue. If we don't end this year with a surplus, if we end, say, flat, then next year's budget, the following year, so FY twenty-seven, we would be starting with four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars less in revenue...
Correct.
Which...
Yeah.
So I know when we set the budget and we talk about the budget, we try to be as creative as possible as to how could we, um, give something back to the taxpayers, but also not create a situation for our future budgets and, and kinda give us a, a smooth transition. Uh, so, so some of the ways that we have talked about that is either creating, um, either putting an item on the ballot to create a reserve fund, or creating a one-time expense line also in the budget, so for like any maintenance repairs, I know we talked about that, I think at the last meeting, is we know we have a facilities plan with some pretty large items on there. Um, we could put, say, say a roof repair as an expense line that would be offset by that revenue, and then the following year, the revenue goes away, but so does the expense line.
Yeah, it's a great explanation, and human nature being what it is, the temptation is always to grab what you can at the moment and not looking forward enough to realize that you're kinda digging a hole for yourself.
Yeah, it's a rainy day, I feel like it's, use it for something that's gonna be needed down the road. Obviously, roof, stuff like that is, it's gonna happen, it's...
Mm-hmm.
It's there, but can the money be used to put into a CD, earn interest, something to gain where it sits there, finds me, like, if, if interest rates are climbing, is there something that we can do with it to, you know, have it?
All of our funds that are sitting in, in our bank are gaining interest, so we had about...
Well, yeah, where is it at? Like, is there a place, is there a place that I have higher, like, where we can earn more, have something better, you know, to, to gain, doing something a little bit different than where it's sitting? I'm just asking.
No, we have, so we have investment sweep accounts with our bank, so it keeps a minimum amount in our, in our operating account, and then each night, it sweeps out what's in excess into an investment account that's gaining a higher rate of interest. Um, and then as, as expenses come in, it's, it sweeps it back in, uh, to cover those expenses, but, so it, it's to maximize on the best interest rate possible. Uh, and that's why we have seen a lot of increase in revenue the last few years, but as interest rates start to, and I've been conservative with increasing our budget for our, for our interest revenue, because a- as, as some of you may see, the Fed is starting to talk about lowering those interest rates, which means our interest revenue will start to decrease as well.
Thank you.
So you mentioned that the, last night, the SU, um, adjusted the budget a little bit, and that the special education budget, um, will favorably help us, but were you also including the, um, surplus distribution?
Uh, so that's also not in this budget. Um, so also last night, thank you, Tina, so last night, the board, uh, approved using the SU assessment, or, uh, the SU ref, sorry, SU surplus, um...
Special ed surplus, right.
So the SU had two surpluses last year. Uh, they had a general fund surplus of a hundred and thirteen thousand and a special ed surplus of four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The special ed surplus was due to a change in the special ed extraordinary reimbursement calculation, um, that was on plan for, um, so that was just a one-time, uh, a one-time benefit. Um, the board decided last night to use a portion of those surpluses to fund a curriculum position, and to use the rest of it, which is approximately four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, uh, to refund to the districts in FY twenty-six to apply towards their FY twenty-six budgets. Uh, so Rutland Town's portion is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that they'll get as a revenue refund. Um, again, that is one-time money, so, uh, it'll have that one-time benefit, but then the following year, if the SU does not have a size, a surplus to that same size, uh, then, so we need to be creative when we look at our tax rate and our total education spending on how much to, um, offset our taxes with, as well as how much can we maybe put towards, put back into our school to, um, whether it be facilities or, or one-time expenses. The goal is to keep the tax rate sort of on, on a, a steady without any peaks and, and dips, and we, I don't think our taxpayers would appreciate a dip, a big dip one year, but then a large spike the next year, because it would be unexpected and create panic. They always, um, forget the dips and the, and remember the spike, so it's just, just keep it as level as possible.
Um, the big-ticket items that you mentioned on the cost driver slide, presentation, the flooring, the roof, and the HVAC, um, do you have any approximate costs, what those would be if we started them next year or did them?
We have it in the facilities plan, we did not have the roof in there, though.
The roof is not added.
So I do have the five-year plan here. Um, so the, there's pa, there's paving...
Okay.
Um, there's paving for a hundred thousand, there's, um, a, a few different pavings in the future years as well. There's HVAC, um...
Do you want me to add them up? I think I sent them to you and Chris.
Yeah, he's looking.
You're looking, okay.
I'm, well, I'm looking at the five-year plan that was given, so there's a, a few different HVAC controls, there's twenty-two thousand, it looks like in FY twenty-five, and then there's, um, looks like a thirty thousand in FY twenty-six.
We'd have to get updated numbers, too.
And so, and then there's a few other smaller items, but some of these items we can cover with our repairs budget. It's really looking at those larger projects, like...
Cause we have a larger surplus right now, so that's why I was just...
Now, as far as the roof, can I just ask why isn't the roof metal instead of doing, you know, why are we doing?
Well, first of all, a metal roof on a school is totally dangerous with all that sliding off and...
But there's also the, the things that go on them now, like, I'm just asking.
But that also holds up too much, and it will deteriorate the roof really quickly. The asphalt shingles are the only way to go on, on roof like that, of that magnitude of, uh... But the sh, the shingle, we had, we had to reshingle, I wanna say, twenty years ago. So we still got a good ten years left of no shingles, so the roof is not at the top of the list. There's so many other things inside...
Not, it wasn't on the list?
No, but I'm just saying, people are talking about it. But inside, there's H, HVAC systems and stuff like that that need to be updated all the time. You know, you have a, all kinds of other things, and we got flooring that needs to be replaced, um, and when you pull the flooring up...
And that opens up asbestos.
There's always asbestos glue underneath, so you have to have the whole thing every, every time you do that, so, yeah. Those are just some of the things that...
I'm pretty sure we, we also got an estimate last year for the floor abatement if we did it all at once.
It was cheaper.
It was cheaper to do it all at once, is what I remember.
Yeah.
Um, and that was one of the reasons that we threw it on to the bond for the upper floor originally, so that it, we could get that done as well and have some cost savings. Um, so that might be something to look at again.
And one of the things we talked about when we put the new flooring down, it's a, it's a zero maintenance flooring. You don't need to strip and wax it like old. Strip and waxing is, is a thing of the past. You know, when you put down new flooring now, it's sweeping mop, that's it. There's no more stripping and did that for years. You know, so...
So is it possible... So is it possible maybe for next time to come back with some ideas of that?
So my thought would be for the board to sort of discuss where you think you'd like to see education spending and from, percentage-wise, and from there, we can kind of sort of calculate, okay, what do we have to work with as far as how much can we put into this budget for one-time facilities projects? And I can work with Sarah and Kelly to see, based on what we have to work with, and say we have two hundred thousand, what he feels the priority list should be, if we had two hundred thousand dollars to spend, what project should we tackle first? And then we can put those into the budget as single-line items.
You say that's based on whatever surplus we choose to use is going to increase the education spending, is that what?
How much surplus are we talking here?
So the surplus is already in there, so it's four hundred and twenty-four thousand, but there's going to be a hundred and nineteen thousand dollar refund that's coming back from the SU. So you're really looking at five forty-four.
That's not in there yet.
The hundred and nineteen's not in there. So right now, you're up by, you're up thirty-five thousand dollars in education spending after you apply, if there's no other changes made to this budget. We know there's one other one, well, there's the special education assessment, which will lower the budget a little bit. There's one other one that we talked about at the SU level that, that is going to impact your local budget that we can't discuss in open session. But if you take, if you take the budget, it's in front of you, you minus, if you subtract the hundred and nineteen, you're looking at a budget that's approximately down eighty thousand dollars education spending, so.
We spent all four twenty, now we're up. So you're Three seventy-five, whatever. Yeah. Which is what?
Three percent. So I, I think the board really needs to discuss and see what they feel comfortable presenting to the taxpayers. I mean, we have more things that are going to go into this that could impact it. But what is the number you feel comfortable presenting to the, to the taxpayers, knowing that this is only one piece of the calculation of the tax rate?
So just going further on that one, with Act one twenty-seven, this number will be significantly higher, correct? I mean, whenever, what our taxpayers care about, the amount that this
The increase in the tax rate.
The increase in the tax rate will go up.
So, so the, the significant portion of the tax rate increase from Act one twenty-seven you were hit with last year. The piece that you will get with this year is the decrease in the incentive that you received. So I think, I believe last year you received seventeen cents and that's going to go down by twenty percent. So approximately, I think it was three cents.
Fourteen cents, yeah.
So, so that's, that three cents you're going to immediately get. The, the factors that we don't know are, what is your per pupil count going to be, is that going to go up or down? And that, the big factor in that is going to be, did your free and reduce change, did more people, were more people directly certified? Did you, more people fill out the household income form, because free and reduced has a significant impact on your pupils. The second piece is going to be the tax commissioner's recommendation on December first for the yield. And then that last piece is, is the CLA, which we won't have until It's usually, it's supposed to be December fifteenth, but the last few years, we haven't gotten until around twentieth, twenty-second, twenty-third.
May I ask a question about that free and reduced lunch form? When, are we able to check and see what percentage of our families filled that out?
The state sends us, we don't see the forms, but if someone fills out the online form, the state sends us a file with those students that qualify.
So you get feedback that a family filled it out?
Yes.
So what percentage of families have filled it out? Because it doesn't mean that they qualified, right? It just means that they filled it out?
We'd have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I would have to get back, I would say minimal.
Minimal, so, and our
Can you run a
I can ask Sherry.
Well, can you run like a, you have parent teacher conferences coming the next two days. Can you run with four of your Chromebook computers with the link? So if parents come in with a station and just say, if you haven't filled out your free and a reduce, here's your way of doing it? And then you can get tons of people right there, run four or five Chromebooks at a time. I mean, and have somebody there to ask questions. I have to say, we did that at our school.
It's a great idea, we did that for Infinite Campus one year.
But it, I mean, we got almost like, I think, I would say like sixty, seventy percent of our students come in, get it.
Great idea.
So our goal is to capture as many people as we can that qualify. Fortunately for us, the, this change that the state made last year to include Medicaid-eligible students in the direct cert information is allowing us to automatically capture a lot more students and not counting on those forms. And I think that was probably a change based on, because the universal free meals is really discouraging people to, to fill out those forms because they're already getting free meals, they figure what's the point of filling out the form? But that changed, because a lot of the people that do qualify also qualify for Medicaid. And are receiving whether it's whether it be health benefits or some other benefits through Medicaid.
The principal at Rutland High School sent out emails to all families last week, I believe it was, with a link or a little picture of a lunch saying if you, you know, our school is able to provide free lunch to all students, if we want to continue this, we need you to fill out this form, and he had that form linked on it. I don't think that's a hundred percent accurate.
No.
But But I was just letting you know, you know, sent, I, I don't know, a direct, you know, getting email might help, too.
Universal free meals program is a statewide program for all students.
I, I think I would like, I heard a lot from the town that we need to overhaul the way that we do the budget. So I feel like I would like it to be a little lower after, or at least after examining, you know, as Chris was saying, you know, staffs and student ratio and just kind of looking at the whole picture. Because I want to be able to say to constituents, no, we're not overstaffed and this is why. And just kind of, maybe it will end up at the same spot, but I just think going through the exercise would be really helpful. And might make us reconsider some positions. Especially since personnel seems to be one of our big cost drivers.
Write that for the next meeting. In the meantime, do you want us to look at a certain percentage-wise so that we can kind of see what projects we would put on that priority list?
So, we're talking about the three-point-six number?
No, so we're looking at education spending, so right now
At the zero-point-three.
Zero-point-three, after we add that refund, it's going to be down approximately, what do we say, eighty thousand? So, but that's using five hundred and five hundred and forty-five thousand in one-time money.
Which we haven't discussed about how we want to use that yet.
That's the piece that I'm looking for feedback on, because five, using that much in one-time money is dangerous for the following year.
Can we look at minus two percent, or is that too much?
Minus two, we can look at that, but that's not going to give you money to use for
We gotta cut stuff to get there.
Well, I, just going through the exercise and seeing it, I think maybe a minus one and a minus two. Just to see it. I mean, I, I know it doesn't, it may not be something we can do because it would take away from what our kids are getting or we feel that is important, or it doesn't align with the strategic plan, but if we don't go through the exercise of doing it, sometimes in putting it in black and white, it's hard to tell.
Do you, you want to cut spending, to be clear?
I, I would like to, yes, if possible.
I don't. I look at the numbers, I mean, we're purely personnel-driven, but we've pretty much stripped down any other spending we can. I don't think we're overstaffed at any point unless the administration, Chris Down, tells us we are, then I'd entertain that, but I think, other than that, things are kind of outside of our control. I, I think we've done, there's enough deferred maintenance where I'd like to use some of that surplus as a one-time expense, which is obviously going to create an increase. Last year, what did we come in with an increase? Nine-six? Ballpark me out, it doesn't have to be. Above five, well, above five, we're below the ten percent cap, so I think.
I can look at my computer and get you a number if you need.
Yeah, I mean, if we spent all of the, all of the surplus, it puts us at around three-seven, and then we're not going to get a big enough, a big enough, as big a cent decrease, so I'd, I'd guesstimate once we all shakes out, if we spend all that surplus, we're going to be at a five percent increase. I'd be okay with spending half the surplus, coming in to the taxpayers with a three percent increase. I mean, we didn't add anything. That's just purely cost of living, healthcare. I think that's a pretty reasonable budget to bring back that, I don't, I don't personally feel or see that where we can cut. But that's just me. And I don't think three and a half percent, while doing two hundred grand worth of capital improvements, is a bad increase to show the taxpayers. Especially when you look at the actual numbers and how Rutland Town spends versus the rest of this state, when you take away the equalized per pupil thing, we're a hundred and eleven out of a hundred and twenty-two. Now, you bring in the formulas and we go up the chain, but without that, we do a pretty good job with not a lot of money comparatively to the rest of the state and how we're spending. Our numbers are great, above average, so I would hate to start slashing and burning to bring the impact of our teachers, or, excuse me, to the kids down first. Secondly, you know, seven percent of our budget is personnel, we're a big employer to this, to this region, so. I don't think three and a half is out of control, but the taxpayers could tell me differently for the product we put out.
Sarah, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Hmm?
How many, every grade classes do you have?
How many third? Two.
Two, fourth?
Two, two, we have two sections of every grade except for kindergarten, we have forty-four students. So that's also, but we have to go by our class size policy, so we need to average, oh, I just sent it to you, Chris. Hang on. Um, one second. So, what, classes in grades kindergarten through third grade when taken together shall average fewer than twenty students per grade, is what the policy states.
Is that the JRCSU policy?
Mm-hmm, but it's like a model policy from the ALE.
It's based on quality, the education.
Educational school quality standards.
Is tw, is what, twenty?
Is, they, grades K through three, when taken together, shall average fewer than twenty per teacher.
I know, like, pre-K is based off this square footage of the classroom, right?
Preschool is under different licensing, so it's not governed by the agency of education.
But then the rest of the school, it's
Yeah, kind, that's why the policy says kindergarten through three, when taken together, shall average fewer than twenty students per teacher. So in my principal's report, I list how many kids per grade, so you can see every time I do the enrollment in there.
Yeah, I know that, I just didn't know how many teachers we have for each grade.
So we have two teachers for every grade level except for kindergarten, we have that bubble class of forty-four.
I knew there was a third, three somewhere in there.
Last year, it was three sections of fourth.
That's right, okay.
Yep. Two.
And I know last year with the whole budget thing, I learned that they're all full-time.
Correct.
So, but we're only required to have ten hours to pay for it.
Yep.
Okay, I know a few people there that were saying that, then why are we paying for full-time? We didn't pay, we all had to pay for full-time preschool and then daycare. Well, this is the way to cut costs, why are we paying for more than ten hours? Why, why isn't parents contributing to part of this tuition like everybody else? Why are we not just doing it as part-time or something like that, why is it full-time? That's a cost, that's a cost coming, send to it.
I, I think that we did explore that last year a little bit.
Mentioned, but nothing, at the meeting, but when the budget, but nothing, I didn't hear anything after that as to.
I think
Because we have to pay, don't we?
So, universal preschool, as Megan, you're right, we have to pay a minimum of ten hours per week. So we also, if you see some of our, we pay a lot of money to other area preschools because some parents, it's universal. So an example, somebody may live, work in Virgens and they want their child to go to one of the preschool partnerships in Middlebury. So then Rutland Town pays for ten hours for that child if it's in an approved preschool program for that. That's something that the board can consider.
I just think that why are we paying for more than what is, that's going to save money theoretically, I just
I think that one of the reasons was it got the kids, it, it, the full-day preschool program, because of the limitations on the size of the classroom, is mostly four-year-olds. And so having them the full day, some of the benefits were that they were used to the full day of being at school, so it helped with transition. Families liked it because it, it did help with.
They can contribute to the cost, that's true.
But I think, I think one thing that we looked at, and I know, I think, Tim, you brought it up, is you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, then we have to, then parents have to pay, so they're not paying, you know, they're paying out of pocket for taxes, but now they're paying out of pocket for childcare. Now they're paying out of pocket, we're already having them pay out of, having to transport their kids because we can't transport them, right?
So
We don't transport preschool.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they used to be able to, but now we can't.
Correct.
So now they, now they have to change their schedules to transport their kids. I think it's
We did it ourselves, I mean, we had to pay for a full-time daycare spot and pay for a full-time preschool spot, even if they didn't go to preschool full-time because they didn't offer, or they only had a half-time spot, like, we all had to do it in the past before this whole universal preschool came into play. Like, we all had to do this, so why are we making, you know?
I guess I'm just saying, why are we do, make it all accommodations now, it seems like we're just
Louis ran those numbers for us last year because he ran the numbers for, I think it wa, it was cheaper
I'm just asking.
To contract out, no, it's a great question, to contract out rather than do in-school.
But that was for full day, we ne, we never looked at if we changed our format now.
Yes, so we looked at if we changed, so right now, we have two classrooms full day, if we went to two part-day classrooms, we could pretty much eliminate a program, one classroom and service the same amount of students. So you would save one classroom, which is cost is approximately a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
But then the benef, what, what's the cost of that for the student? Because they're only, you know, our students are doing well, as you saw on our K through one
Not only what's the cost of our students, but what's the cost to our parents.
But it's both, though, because it's, the K through one grades were phenomenal.
And when we got down to, like, after, when we were focused on our third budget, the dialogue that we had with community members was, this is what we're taking away and this is what it's done to your tax rate. And most of the people, though they were few, were like, well, I'm not willing to give that up to save one penny on my tax rate. So, and like with, with this, even if everything went perfectly and we're out, and we save a hundred and twenty thousand, that's potentially two pennies. You know, but we don't know what other impacts that has, we don't know what impact that has on the kid once they do show up in kindergarten, you know, and things like that.
We're just, it's like, what happened in the past five years, you know what I mean, like before COVID, like, we all did this as parents, we all did, like, why, or, you know?
Well, the state changed, I mean, it's
I know everything.
We'll be fair to say that, you know, we, pre-K is like state-funded daycare. But they've also changed the game in daycare, even if you're not in the pre-K system, you're paying out of your paycheck now. And that's all incomes, you could have been private paying, paying a hundred and eighty out of pocket, and this year, it's all different. This, now, now you're paying three eighty, same, same provider, but now they're income-sensitive and so some, like, so this is one of the things we do have control of. We have the space in our school, we could decide as a community, let's just pay eight to ten hours a week. Or do we staff it up and do we provide those kids full day? It's got a great benefit to a lot of double-income parents. It's got a great benefit to a lot of double-income parents that can have their kid working all day, both those parents can be actively working in this community. And hopefully, over time, the data shows that we have stronger K and one, because we're providing that. That's one of the only controls we have, or we could shut it down and save a couple pennies, which is certainly an option, and have an empty classroom there, or do eight to 10 hours, that's one thing we can talk about. But I think, you know, we're going to get some angry people with young kids, and that's pot, potentially, again, back to the property taxes and back to property values, why parents are dying to move to Rutland Town for pre-K through eight now, it used to be K through eight. And back when I was there, it was, you know, kindergarten was still over teeny hill, but it's.
Yeah, no, I get it, I'm just saying, like, if we end up with three classes, it's just the added, every, it's just like where the expenses every year, and, you know, we're the ones paying for it, you know, we've already paid our dues, and why are we, you know, it's just, you know, I just.
Everything changes.
I know, I know.
We all, we know where we're at with that, and it's something I think we all are in favor of keeping within our budget.
No, and I get it, I, and I'm not disagreeing with it, and, you know, but it's just like, just trying to figure out a way to, like, the money, like, the spending, it's the healthcare, that's truly what it is, it's the healthcare costs.
Yes.
It's the universal free lunch, like, do it the way it was before, the kids, they get it, they need it, they still get it, but why offer to every student, you know? Yeah, like, you know, there's just.
Make schools great, no, ah, but what we will see the impact is, as you probably noticed too, over the last 20 years, the amount of IEPs in, in Vermont and all across the country have skyrocketed. We're actually doing early intervention because where they're attached, not, and there's early intervention everywhere in the state, but they're not, you, let's be honest, they're not getting it at those private daycares. They're not having the staff that are onsite, getting the Beth Coughlin's evaluating pre-K kids, so over time, if we're getting to these kids at three, four, or five, especially now that the demographic has shifted heavily with the voucher program, if we catch these kids early, it's going to save us tons of money when they're in third, fourth, and fifth grade, if we can get them reading, if we can get them writing. This is like the last program we want to talk about cutting. And it's the easiest, because we only have to service eight hours, but if we get those kids early, that's, you know, that's, that's what the state's got to tackle too, we have a lot more kids that, when I, you, you grew up here, I grew up here, we didn't have the Cortina Inn. We did, but no one was living there. And now that's added stress on all of our staff. All these kids that are coming that have nothing at home, and if we can get them for those eight hours a day and change them early, hopefully they're not relying on the services and the systems later on.
And that was something else that we had heard, that we're capturing more students and being able to intervene earlier, because we are aware of their needs. If they come in kindergarten, we're already a little bit behind them.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and that's.
I think it happened, it was a year when we had 22 kids in kindergarten in each section, I'll never forget, and I think we had four students that were not potty-trained that came to kindergarten with one teacher with 22 kids, and I, I, at the time, I had asked superintendent, come in and show me how you can get these kids ready for recess, when somebody's in the bathroom that needs assistance. So I think everything, the opioid epidemic, I mean, a lot of things have just changed where we are now. Um, and so we looked at preschool, and there was a study from the University of Michigan that, um, they had offered preschool, and within 10 years, their special ed costs had reduced dramatically because of just what Colin said. And so when I went in, we had part-day preschool program that was lovely, it was amazing teacher, a great preschool, and I had a lot of stay-at-home parents and grandparents that brought their kids in. And then some of the kids I looked at at kindergarten that had never held a book, that were not potty-trained, that were really left in front of a screen, those were the kids that needed those full-day preschool programs, some kids don't, like, some kids don't, they are, um, but some of those kids, we were not meeting, and in talking with those parents, they needed full day, they also would ask for transportation, unfortunate, it's some, not something we can provide. Um, and I know that there's talk, um, in legislature about schools having to provide full-day preschool, that's been a conversation, and I think other schools are worried, because they're like, now we need to, this is more money, this is going to cost more, where do we put these classrooms? So right now, our preschool classrooms are in small classrooms, like, we're, we're, we have teachers that are doubled up, we have teachers that are like in closet spaces. We have great enrollment, steady enrollment, so we are fortunate, um, but those are things we can cut, and that's up to the board, that Louis did run the numbers, it is cheaper to outsource preschool.
I don't remember if there were enough programs, so, for all the students.
Yeah.
That's one of the big things, there's not enough programs.
Yeah, so that's the other issue too.
There's not enough.
Yeah. It's a catch 22.
Yeah, so it's a catch, yeah.
I was, instead of going down to minus two, maybe just doing a little bit minus, either minus one. Do, I, I, I do think it's good to go through the exercise of the cut, but we can always ask for more if one's not enough.
I, I can present whatever the board wants, I just think the board needs to have a consensus, because, I mean, we can provide you all the data in the world, but if the board isn't at a consensus as to what they want to see, um, or, or what direction they want to go to, then it's going to be hard to present the right information to you.
Correct. Jeff, do you want to?
Well, I kind of agree with what Colin said, I mean, that's what we talked about at the last meeting. Spend some of their surplus money now and save a little bit for when we're going to get hit.
He wants a number, like, 3%?
Don't, don't look at me, huh?
I'm saying, I'm telling you, like, show us the 3%, and then how much does that give us to spend?
Are you talking about total expense? Or?
Education.
Education.
Our surplus, including what we get.
You're, you're saying to go up? You're saying to go up from 0.3 to 3?
Yes, if we spend the surplus, we're going up. If we use it for revenue, we stay flat, but if we want to spend any of it, including putting in.
I thought the 0.3 included the revenue.
Is revenue.
Includes, includes it all as revenue. So if we want to start spending some of it with repairs.
Going up.
Then the expense is going to increase, which is going to increase the education spending. So Colin, Colin is accurate, so if we were to spend 200,000, that's going to increase that number to 3% approximately.
That's what I was asking you, if you wanted to show negative two, Tina? We have to cut some stuff in the budget.
And not do any of the.
Because it's already baked in.
Besides the 113, so.
Correct, yeah.
So we're at like minus point five right now, with the 119.
I'm going to take my leave, but thank you very much, this has been great.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, we'll see you on December 3rd.
Great, thank you.
And it's great to get a head start.
Just, Chris, I know that you're kind of surprised. Um, December 3rd, the supervisory union will be having a legislative listening hour. Um, we haven't sent out emails really much, just to save the date for, um, the senators that were coming tonight. Um, but we'll be inviting that to all senators and reps for all of our supervisory union districts. And that will be at the, uh, central office, which is right next to the Price Chopper in West Rowland, so a little further along this road.
The hardware store.
I don't, I don't know what it was before.
It was a hardware store.
No idea.
Looks nicer than a hardware store, though.
We'll get you a hammer.
So, what we talked tonight is physical year 26.
Correct.
Budget. So, in the March meeting, we vote, we vote on the physical year 26.
Yes.
And all this is available on the web, whose website?
So the, uh, Rutland Town Schools website has a link to, there's a, a board resources section on the top that you can go to, and that will link you with the supervisory union's website, so you can access minutes from the meeting, um, and recordings, I believe.
Ye, yes, and we'll put up the cost drivers and the budget data, it's not up there yet, but it will be there in a couple of days, we want to make sure that it's presented to the board before it goes up on the website.
Oh, I came to listen and learn, and I'm in a different position now than I was when I came to the budget meetings on the, on the revotes last year when it wasn't successful.
Which is still the same wonderful guy.
Well, you can, anyway, well, thank you very much, uh.
Well, thank you all for coming.
I got it.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
We appreciate the engagement, we really do.
So, Chris, was this, um, dropped of the budget, was this, what we were talking about with stu, students to staff ratios, was that looked at, like, through that lens? We have no staffing changes, I'm just curious.
So we have a level service, which is no new addition, so what we do is the class size is mandated by the educational quality standards. Uh, it's 20, I think it's 21, 21.2, which is around, uh, staffing, and so that's where we look at that maximum, so when we look at our staffing, we do use the ed quality standards, uh, for that. So one of the things I did talk about that, as an SU, we should take a look at is around revisiting the minimum and the optimal, but the maximums right now are still our set, we, you know, we can't raise that maximum. You know, so K through three is a 20, we can't say, well, we're going to do 25, so, ed quality standards, you know, is, is capped. For K through three at 20, and then 25 is for four through 12, uh, you know.
So the only grade, um, on the principal report, that's our lowest one, it would be 26 in second grade, so.
You're going to keep two kids, two classes for that one.
Right, so 26 in second grade, you're, you're, you're above the 20.
Right, and we can't, we have to have two separate classes.
Correct.
No matter how old they are.
Correct.
It's 25, I mean, it's just, it is what it is.
Right, so, so I think that's where Rutland Town finds themselves in a different situation than other schools within our SU, is that you are continually flirting with the maximum class size as opposed to minimum.
Well said.
Right, and so I think that's where, you know, and, and you're right, you get to that number where you're at 20, 22, 21, 22, then you look at, how do you best support that? You know, so let's say you had 21 first-grade students, 22 first-grade students, well, the maximum class size, it, it says 20, but would you really want to break that?
It averages them together.
Correct.
It averages them, so we have had 19, 20 in K3 before.
Right.
So you average them together, but knowing, like, we had 44 kindergarten kids coming. And knowing that we may have some late registers in some areas of need, which we did, we needed three classes, we knew the kiddos that were coming.
So we, so when we sit down, when Louis and I sit down with Sarah and, and Mike, you know, this is something which we take a look at, and I know, like, last, uh, last year is, uh, you know, this year's eighth grade, um, you know, as we had a lot of students who moved in, they're high numbers, we looked at how we could best support those students uh, through that, and I know the teachers were adamant about that they were fine with the numbers being the way they're at, they, but I think that's just, it depends on the age, and uh, you know, and we're at, like, you know, 26 seventh or eighth graders might be a little bit different depending with the teacher as opposed to 26, um, you know, fourth graders. So I think, you know, it, but, so it is something which we do take a look at, but it, I, I I am going to encourage the SU to, uh, once they revisit, and just take a look at that minimum and the optimal. Um, but I, as I said before, I think it is important for us to just continue to have ratios that's uh, we can plug in as we take a look at, just so, you know, it does take some of the calculation out, uh, for us as well.
Sarah, isn't there like 27 in Austin's class?
That's our next lowest score, yeah.
I mean, like, that's a great class, like, they could have always been one class.
You can't.
I know, but if the optimal, like, they are just such a good group.
Yeah.
You know, like, you know, like, it's just that that optimal thing, like, where, you know, it's like, they're just over the number, where it's.
So does the board, um, want to revisit this next time when we have some more updated information? Or?
The budget piece.
The budget piece.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah. I know, I feel like we did shift this budget and schedule up, right, like, trying to get ahead of the game, but then I feel like we're.
This is the same. Last year.
Not five years ago, or, you know, I felt like it started later, five years, right, right now.
Since we merged, I've, November's always been my, you know, so.
Yeah, it's just like, it's great to have, I just don't feel like I have enough information, like, you know, arbitrarily say, raise it 3%, lower it 3%, like, but like you said, there's so many factors, so many factors that make such an impact on the budget, you know? It's like.
Does this still have the seventh grade trip in it? Because that was something that we were going to revisit, because it, it was kind of taken out last time and paid for by ESSER.
Last year is ESSER-funded.
Right.
We took it out, yes, correct, we took it out, um, and funded it through ESSER.
So, is it still in here or not?
That reminds me, I did want to talk about DC at some point. Not now, but moving forward.
It's not in there, is it?
No.
So Tina, it's not in there?
It's not in there, okay. Because that, I mean, that's something that.
Much.
Policy if we're not going to pay for it.
For this year?
For next year, I just think having the. I think we're already there this year, we've committed to DC, and we'll, we'll know what the numbers are later. But I would like to talk about that moving forward.
But that's not part of the budget.
Correct, just reminding me, I'm sorry.
I'd like to talk about that before March.
Right now, we have 15 extra grand.
We can add that to the next meeting's agenda.
Tina, I just want, I know you brought up the
Right now?
The policy around the seventh grade class trip, the, the wording does say the Rutland Town will pay up to $500.
That's my plan.
For attending students.
Doesn't say May.
It does not say May. So, it does say will.
Says will pay.
Will pay, right.
So that's the difference, so it does, so either we have to include it in the budget, or, uh, for up to $500 per student, or we need to rescind the policy.
You could, the board could say, this year, we can only pay $50 per student towards this, and figure out how you.
Because we said up to.
You can say will pay up to, so you don't, right, so you could pay a dollar, or one penny. So just to, so I think that's something the board should.
That's another question, is the seventh grade trip continuing with, when Mike Rowe potentially retires, so we haven't received any official word, I know he had mentioned that a few years ago, that he was retiring. So, could we have that information for next meeting as well?
Retirement?
Seventh grade.
About the seventh grade trip?
Mm-hmm.
What's going on for next year for our budget? Oh, the other thing I wanted to ask about the budget is, um, Algebra I. Does this include, um, trying to have that for Rutland Town?
That would not impact staffing at all, that would just be reorganization of the scheduling, just assignment, so that doesn't impact.
Great. Anyone have any other comments on the budget before we move on tonight? Because we'll, we'll, we'll be revisiting it. Do we need, do we executive session tonight for it?
Do we have one, oh, not for this, I'm sorry.
Not for this.
Do we task Louis with anything?
What?
Do we task him with anything to bring back?
So, we're getting information from Kelly as to what projects, and I think, next time.
And what percentage increase?
And then what, um, and then seventh grade trip information, and then?
Well, back it up.
45%.
Yeah.
You guys want to make, like, give him a number, like, bring us back a 3% increase, so whatever that surplus is, give that to Kelly, and then he can prioritize how to spend it. So we have an exact number, so we're not talking about nothing next time.
I, I'm okay with that.
Is that okay? You guys comfortable with bringing a 3% increase? I am.
Let's see what it looks like.
And I'll give a dollar number for the capital improvement plan.
And there's tangibles, that, you know, we're coming with 3%, and this is what we're doing with it.
I was just highly stressed.
That works for me.
If, if.
If that 3% number, if you feel comfortable with that 3% number, I, I will bring back the information.
Let's do that.
Because then we can, yeah.
I'm not on the capital expense budget, but if paving the school bus parking lots on it, I'm going to ax it. It's just to throw that out.
Yeah, no, we talked about HVAC.
I'm just telling you guys where I am.
And, um, flooring abatement.
Other than that, I don't want to.
HVAC.
I'll take the recommendations.
The abatement.
I thought you said something about having a baby, and I was like, we are.
Floor abatement.
I was like.
Um, I also.
That's another conversation, Sarah.
When I was at the super, um, by, or the VSBA meeting, that I believe there was a, a group that will come in and give you an assessment on replacing the HVAC, and um, I think from an efficiency standpoint, and then can help also find, um, grants and funds afterwards, I'll have to try to find the card, would that be something you'd be interested in?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Please.
For that. Okay, um.
Last piece, to just address you, Tim, I think the way I approach it, and I had a great mentor when I first started in the City Public Schools, and the president at the time said, you know, there's always what, you know, we can't control property taxes, CLAs, and I you don't approach a business by what, a business or a school by what a property taxpayer wants to pay you, I approach it with, what does a school need? I trust that. I trust that Sarah, Chris put together the budget, they've looked at the demographics. I don't believe we're overstaffed. So, on top of that, all we're really bringing back to the taxpayers is, we haven't added a, a single thing. We have appropriate staff, we have great staff. It's inflation, and we can't control that. And until someone gets a handle on that, you don't just say, well, healthcare's up, we're cutting two teachers, and we're gonna suffer. That's how I approach it, early or late. If, if we identify problems, or Chris, or Sarah, we looked at the census and said, hey, look, we're gonna be down twenty kids next year, you know, fifty over the next five, then we gotta start breaking staff down. Not because they're bad teachers, but we just don't have the kids anymore. But our numbers are pretty consistent at that three-fifty number.
I mean, I'm-
Tuition, we can't control, so that's, that's what I wanna bring to taxpayers. They can come back to us and say, hey-
Have our numbers increased over the last ten years?
About, about, I looked at the, the census, it says like, one point two percent, Rutland Town.
I was just curious, because I feel like there's been more kids coming in, like, on our side of town, like, you know, more families, but I don't know, age-wise, what they are.
If you look at the last twenty years in Vermont, population has declined, student population has declined. But Rutland Town, you go county by county, town by town, we're up, flat to up, which is, which in Vermont is actually increasing, but we've been pretty consistent.
Yeah, I mean, just around me, I, I've noticed that there's more people, but I think that they're younger. So I'm, I know there's little, possible little ones, but, you know, like, so-
If some retired folks decided to move south, you'd see our numbers jump rapidly. I mean-
Yes.
Houses don't stay on the market.
Very long.
Very long in Rutland Town, so.
Well, and one of the things that changes over all of those years is COVID, and how many people could be in a classroom, and different spaces you have to have for different things, so, and you look at all that, we're, we're in pretty good shape as far as that goes.
So you take a look at, you know, again, like neighboring, like Chitting and Mendon, significantly down over the last twenty years. They used to be pretty close to us in population size, kids-wise anyways.
Oh, we're like, well over a hundred, more than that.
Yeah, so you just look around, and so we're, you know, if we get to a point, though, and, and I guess what Vermont's tasked with is looking at all the communities and saying, okay-
And, and people wanna live in Rutland Town because of the school.
Louis-
Oh, absolutely.
Would you be able to give me the numbers that are updated, that you'll be presenting next month before, like, next Tuesday, like, in a week, so I can put that into the circle article? Do you think you'd, or not?
In a week?
Well, it's just the number, not that, not the budget part, but if you were able to, um, on the summary of changes, if that were up three percent, I, I just-
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, so if we were to just look at what three percent would be, I can definitely give you that.
Something like that, I just, like, what our expense would be and educational spending, I guess, that, I could just include that into-
Yeah, so if I could just add, and see what, how much money we have to add in there to, to get to the three percent.
That'd be helpful. Thank you. All right, so if the board's ready, I'd like to move on.
People will-
Okay. Um, to contract recommendations. So we have, um, for informational purposes only, several extracurricular, um, contracts. For basketball coaches, licensing board member, peer co-leader, rock climbing coach, um, who Dennis Van Buren, um, has declined the stipend and wants to donate it to his daughter's class, which I think is very nice. And the second year in a row, he's done that.
Is she in April?
No.
Okay.
Sixth.
Sixth grade, so, um, so I'll take a motion to approve these.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Is there not gonna be a seventh-grade girls' basketball team?
There were not enough students, so the, I think there was one or two students only, so they're gonna play up on the eighth grade. So it's a seventh-eighth team, correct, Kelly?
Yeah, I think there were four, and then there were three.
It's, it's very-
Yes, very small.
Only like eight or nine girls.
Total?
Total of some of the eighth, yeah. I don't remember the exact makeup, but-
Oh, okay.
It was tiny.
I can look, though. I'm trying to think where, if you want the numbers, I just reviewed them.
No, you know, I trust you, I just wanted to know.
Well, it's changed, though, it has changed, because first, there was only one seventh-grade girl that signed up, and then there was more.
So that was the news I got, the memo I got.
That's usually what happens, and then on the day, you have like, the entire class comes out.
I think there's thirteen eighth graders.
So we have eleven total for seventh and eighth-grade girls. There are three, three girls right now from seventh grade.
And then how many seventh-grade boys?
Currently, we have six. So per, um, Athletic Handbook, we're going to have a tryout for sixth graders to play up.
So how many positions are you?
Just one.
Just one?
One seventh-grade boys' team.
Just one position.
Oh, no, just one position, so there'll only be seven members on that team?
We're, for seventh-grade boys, there's seven seventh gr- six seventh graders, and we're going to have sixth graders try out. Um, Coach Grimes thought maybe two to three.
Okay, so-
Depending.
I think that's a good amount.
Coaching positions, not positions on the team.
Correct.
He's the assistant.
I was asking players how many positions, and you were answering me coaches. I think that's where I was like, one?
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm like, I have no idea what, I'm still not following, now I got it, got it.
So there'll be eight to nine players on the team, which is a good amount.
Correct.
Okay.
And then eighth-grade boys, we have thirteen players.
I need that one.
Okay.
All right, so I'll still, I'm still waiting for a motion from the board?
I'll make them up here.
Thank you, Tim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.